Are we on yet? Great. Well, welcome, everybody. It's good to see some faces I haven't seen for a while. Thanks for being here. And you all got so quiet when it turned 6:29. I didn't even have to bang the gavel. How nice. So, any teachers out there? No teachers? I was gonna say, just one? Yeah, don't you wish the classroom was always like that? So, so let's call the meeting to the Santee City Council to order Wednesday, January 11th, 2023. It's now 6:30 PM. Let the record reflect that we do have all council members present and accounted for. The legislative invocation tonight will be given by Pastor Ted Brent. And here's a little... You can applaud if you want, but I'm gonna say a little bio here, so... And then we'll follow the invocation with the Pledge of Allegiance tonight. And tonight, you know what? I'm gonna call on retired Fire Chief John Garlow to lead us in that Pledge of Allegiance tonight. Yep, last chance to get you, so. So, the invocation tonight will be by Pastor Ted Brent. He serves the Skyline Lakeside Church, oversees and manages all campus ministries and functions, performs pastoral care, and organizes support at community events. Pastor Brent has been a member of Skyline Church for three years and was hired as campus pastor almost a year ago. He received his degree in English and a master's degree in education from SDSU, as well as a master's degree in Christian ministry from Southern California Seminary. Pastor Brent has been married to his wife, Jolie, for almost 30 years. Congratulations, sir. And they have four children, two boys who have graduated from high school, and twin seventh-grade girls. I'm a twin, so I'm saying good luck with that one as they grow up. He was an English teacher at West Hills High School for 28 years, 18 of whom he was a bivocational pastor at a church in Oklahoma. So, wearing two hats at that time, I guess, yes. And Pastor Brent is blessed to have worn many hats over the year, including the pastor of the middle school, high school, college, and young adult administrative and service pastor. At the end of last school year, he resigned from teaching to lead the campus at Skyline Lakeside and is blessed to teach middle school at Skyline Christian Academy and English classes at San Diego Christian College. The pastor is a big fan of sushi and chocolate, not at the same time. Good decision, Pastor.
Thank you.
And we want to thank you for being here tonight. Please pray for God's blessing on our nation, our state, and our city council. Please rise for the invocation and Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you for this night. Thank you for these people gathered here together, both to serve the city and because they love the city. We pray for tonight there to be wisdom and just discernment, Lord. We pray that you're honored in our discussion and discourse. God, this is a great city. You are a giver of all good gifts, Lord, and this city is a gift. It's been a great privilege and pleasure of my life to teach the children of this community for almost 30 years, and it is a beautiful place to live, is a beautiful place to work. It is a gem. And Lord, I pray that tonight, that those gathered here, we are united in purpose to make this city even a better place to be. We pray and lift up for all those that pour in their lives as business owners, as first responders, city council members, and all those that both live and work in this city that call it home, but also call it a place that they love dearly. So, all these things, Lord, we just lift up to you tonight, and we thank you for allowing us to be a part of something great, something beautiful, a place that people cherish, a place that people can call home. And, Lord, a place that is a great place to raise families, to live, to work, and all things, Lord, we ask that you are glorified. And we pray these things in Jesus' name tonight. Amen.
Please join me in honoring our country with the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. And let's see. We're gonna start this off with some fun stuff, and that is honoring the retirement of Fire Chief John Garlow, who we heard from just a moment ago. And so, John, why don't you come on down here in the front? Bring your family with you, if you like, and we'll see how we can roast you here for a few minutes. I know you have some colleagues here also that might want to have a few words. Yes, one, two, three. Can you hear me out there? Great, thank you very much. Hey, Rob, can you do me a favor? When I get there, hand these things over to me? Thanks. That put everybody to work, you know? Glad I got to take first shot over your mouth with the Pledge of Allegiance. What you don't know is that I don't have it planned out. I look around the room before every council meeting and say, all right, who we could pick on tonight? And so, some people are very surprised, so. And tonight was your night. What I have here is a proclamation, City of Santee, and says, "Whereas Chief John Garlow began his fire service career in 1990 for the San Diego Rural Fire Protection District, whereas Chief Garlow served the community of Santee for over 23 years, beginning in June 1999, when he was hired as a firefighter apprentice with the Santee Fire Department, and whereas Chief Garlow promoted through the ranks from firefighter apprentice to firefighter paramedic, fire engineer, fire captain, fire division chief, and ultimately, fire chief, the highest-ranking position in the Santee Fire Department." Isn't that every fire department? Pardon me. "Whereas Chief Garlow has been a leader in the fire department responding to thousands of emergency calls before officially retiring from the city of Santee on December 28th, 2022. And whereas, under Chief Garlow's leadership, the Santee Fire Department has navigated the challenges of the COVID-19 pandemic, and whereas Chief Garlow successfully led the transition from the County Service Area 69 to the Santee Lakeside Emergency Medical Services Authority, bringing local control under the Santee Emergency Medical Services." No small feat, and we thank you very much for that. "And whereas throughout his career, Chief Garlow has responded to many major emergency incidents, including the 1993 Gueyedo..." If I said that correctly? Wahido. Fire. Give me a break there for a second. I tried. I gotta figure out where I was here again. In 1996, Harmony Grove Fire, the 2003 Cedar Fire, and I think you and I were there on that one together, the 2008 Oliver Lighting Complex Fire. "And whereas the Santee Fire Department will remember Chief Garlow as an exceptional leader and a dedicated husband to Deborah and father to John Jr., who inspired confidence and respect through dedication, loyalty, and countless hours serving the Santee community. He will be greatly missed by those who were privileged to know and work with him. Now, therefore, I, John Minto, Mayor of the City of Santee, on behalf of the city council, do by proclaim that Fire Chief John Garlow has been an exceptional member of the city of Santee organization and community that he received due recognition and commendation for superior dedication in the performance of his duties, and appreciation for his exemplary career of public safety service, wishing him the very best in all his future endeavors." Congratulations, John. We have any colleagues that wanna come up and say something before we go to the family? Here's your chance. You don't work for them anymore. Fire, no firefighters wanna come up and say anything?
Captain Doe, I saw you walk in late back there.
Look at, they're still scared of you. The two of you like to say something before I give him the microphone? He says enough. All right, then. You know what? I'm just gonna say this, you know, we worked together a long time. I've been on the council a long time, and we've done everything from go out to Cedar Fire together and why I saw firsthand how firefighters work and learned that there's no way any civilian could ever have any idea of what a fire does, when it does it, and how it does it. Your training and experience is just unbelievable, and that's not just for you, but it's for every one of the firefighters that we have. Biggest difference is that when you get up in the ranks, you have to make a decision, and that decision is made with all that experience and also with some collaboration. And so, everything is done very well. I remember the days we used to go out and do the Relay for Life for cancer, raising lots of money to help people. That's another thing that you did along the way that was just very memorable for me. And if anybody else, probably in the community, was there, they probably remember firefighters being there, because we did pretty well, so. With that, I'm gonna say, have the microphone and please say a few words.
Thank you very much. Is it working? Can you hear me in the back? Okay. I'll be brief. I just wanna say thank you to the council, to City Manager Marlene Best for taking a chance on me. Thank you so much. For the council for being so supportive over the years. I know you don't always get the recognition you deserve for the things you do for the department, but it's considerable, and it's very well appreciated.
Chief Matsushita, as my deputy chief, I couldn't have asked for a better, a better right-hand man. You're incredible. You're the right person to lead us into the future and the department into the future. Over the next couple of years, you'll see more change than in the last 45, and you are the right person, so congratulations. To my family, my wife, Deborah, my son, thank you so much for the support, the unconditional hugs when I got home after shifts, the support of just being there through thick and thin. Love you both.
Oh, wait, there's more. Before I give out some of these parting gifts, I'm gonna ask the council if they'd like to say something. Council? Any comments?
Yeah.
Chief Garlow's been, as, just been a class act from start to finish. You've been an exemplary example of what, what a chief should look like, perform like, stay cool, calm, collected at all times, and always has a smile on his face. One of the coolest things that I mean, we've known each other for a while now, but the coolest things I actually heard you say ever was at your retirement gathering, and I said, okay, now what are you gonna do? Because most times chiefs go and they take over another department or they, you know, do something else in the line, and you said, "I'm spending time with my family." That was really cool, and, and I'm happy that you're gonna be able to do that, and your family's gonna get to see you all the time now. I'm sorry and happy that my family's gonna get to see you all the time now. God bless you for all you did for the city of Santee. God bless you what you do for your family, and I wish you nothing but the very best.
Anybody else?
You know, let's start with Deb. Deb, thank you. You always gotta thank the wife or, you know, anybody in public service, obviously, you know, go through a lot and through your whole career in life, you know, have that support system, so thank you, Deb. Chief, I, you know, the last couple of years, we've had a lot of retirements around here, a lot of department heads, and it's hard to see any of them go. It's hard to see, you know, but everybody that has left, you know, recently has put an enormous amount of time into this city of Santee, and you're no exception for that. 23 years, you know, serving the city of Santee and coming to the ranks, obviously, is a great career and something you should be very proud of. There's, there's always that saying, though, that you, everything that you do, you wanna leave a place better than where you left it, and I think you did that, in my opinion, for the last, was it three-plus years as the chief now? You know, I think you can proudly say that, you know, to yourself, that you left this department better than where you left it, even though each predecessor before you did an amazing job also. You gave these guys something else to move forward, like you said, with Chief Matsushita. He's got something to keep running with right now, so that's because of you. So, congratulations and enjoy your retirement.
My turn. Hi, friend. Hi, family. Love you guys. So, everybody's said great things about your career, and they're all true. Personally, these last couple of years, getting to know you really well, I, I'm just so honored to, I feel like you're a friend, you know, and that's, and you are. And I just bonded with you and your wife instantly when I, you know, met you, but I just want everybody to know what, you know, he doesn't take much recognition. He's a very humble man, very kind man, but what he did behind the scenes to help dissolve CSA 69 is legendary. The city's gonna benefit forever for the work you put in, and I know the work you put in. I thank you for welcoming me onto that board, and somehow you maneuvered me to be chair, and I know you did that. I hadn't served a day. And I know that that was a lot of work and maybe a little strategy, too, but you explained everything you were trying to accomplish, and you did it, so congratulations. I'm so proud of you and so happy for your retirement. Thanks.
I'll be brief. Well done. You've done a great job while you've been here. One thing people don't realize is the Santee Fire Department is ISO-1, and a lot of people wonder what that means. That means that it's basically the top rating you can get for insurance for fire departments, and the fact that they have that tells you how good a job they've done, that they've protected this city from the 2003 fires, they've protected it from a lot of things, and it's excellent job. You've done a great job. Congratulations.
Thank you. Not seeing any of their hands. Well, let's see. I'm not sure what all's in here. I'll let you open this up, but we just have a few of these things for you, probably some t-shirts and hats and, you know, little things like that, Christmas ornaments. Oh. Oh, okay. I'm just the mayor, so let me know what you want me to do. That's a $50,000 bracelet. And then you woke up. All right. Is it engraved? What does it say on it?
Fire Chief John Garlow, 22 years, City of Santee.
All right. Might as well go ahead and dig into this one, too. I'll hold it for you. Didn't want you to feel lonely, so we got your own rig. You know, that just conjures up something I just can't get out of my mind for the future. You being on that rig.
You have bought us a lot of rigs, so thank you for the last one.
Yeah, we have. Great. Now, don't lose that, you may need it. Sign of checks, you know? All right, thank you very much for being here. Congratulations. Thanks for everything. Thanks, John. All right, that takes us to our next recognition, which is in memory of Shanene Johnson, and Vice Mayor Koval is gonna make that presentation.
Am I on?
Family, if you wanna come up, or friends?
Family and friends. Don't be shy, everybody. Family and friends.
She's a lot friendlier than I am.
Come on over here, some of you on this side.
She's a lot friendlier than I am, so don't worry.
Thank you. Say hi, Santee TV.
Hi.
There you go. Okay, so today we're here to celebrate Shanene Johnson. I knew her as Shanene Bazor, but Shanene Johnson. And I have a proclamation to read. Whereas Shanene Johnson grew up in Lakeside, California, where she graduated from El Capitan High School and lived in Lakeside, California, and was a member of the church in Santee, where Shanene was married to her husband, Tom, for 35, five years, and had two children, Holly, if you wanna wave, and Brandy, and she absolutely adored her four grandchildren, Lexi, Blaine, Riley, and Ernie.
Emery.
Emery, sorry. Anyway, I'm sorry. So sorry. Shanene, Shanene worked in the mortgage industry for over 20 years. She was the co-founder of Naomi's Closet and started a similar boutique at McAllister Women's Recovery Center Treatment Program called Kiva, and Shanene was the founder of Shanene's Kids, where each year she coordinated present, presentation of Christmas presents for over 100 children that, that are living with their parents at the East County Transitional Living Center, and it was Shanene's wish to collect money and donate, donate it to the East County Transitional Living Center. I, Laura Koval, on behalf of the Mayor of the City of Santee and the city council, do hereby proclaim that Shanene Johnson received due recognition and commendation for a lifelong, lifetime of outstanding service and dedication to the citizens and the city of Santee. Thank you. So, I did wanna share a few, a personal, I knew Shanene personally, actually, I just found out from her mom, Darlene, back to Lakeview Elementary School. She is a year younger than I am, and so, you know, when you're in elementary school and junior high, we both went to TDS and we both went to El Cap. A year difference is kinda like a lifetime then, right? But there were a lot of standings that went to El Cap, and she was good friends with my younger sister, Kelly, and my cousin, Tom. So, Kelly shared with me, she texted me yesterday and said that her nickname for Shanene, your mom, was General Bazor.
Camp director.
Yeah. And, and my, my sister's nickname was Kegger Kelly, so, you know, what does that mean? But moving forward, through the magic of Facebook, Shanene and I connected. I think she actually reached out to me, and I started noticing all the community work that she was doing, and I thought, wow, I have a bunch of clothes in my closet, and so I went over to Naomi's Closet. It's, if you haven't ever donated to Naomi's Closet, please do. They take women's clothes, it's helped to help women get back on their feet and get out into the workforce. What's the church in Santee that they're located at?
Santa United Methodist.
Santa United Methodist, a little cute...
They're in the back parking lot, aren't they?
Cute building in the back. And so, I went down and I, you know, brought my bags of clothes and purses, and then we started chatting, and then fast forward, I worked, I used to work for the San Diego Padres and Tony Patrica, who you all might know very well. Obviously, he worked there, too. And so, Lisa and Tony were having a birthday party at their house, and I came over, for one of their sons, and I came over, and Shanene was there sitting by the pool, and I sat down next to her, and we just started, we just hit it off, like, you know, didn't skip a beat. And, and that's how our friendship grew as adults, and she's just, you know, discovering all the things she did selflessly for the community. She's just, you know, such a wonderful person, truly, truly missed, and I just wanted to make sure that everybody in Santee knew what a treasure we lost in Shanene. Thank you. And now, if anybody was from the family would like to say anything, I have a microphone.
I can say that she did truly love helping all the people in Santee and Oklahoma and was endless with getting stuff dropped off at the house, and I got to help her with, but endless, endless hours, but she loved it. She loved everybody, loved to help everybody.
We have a Celebration of Life Sunday, so I'm gonna save my speech stuff for...
Thank you, everybody, and yes, Celebration of Life for Shanene is at the Elks on Sunday, right? I think there's already over 400.
It's 465 right now.
Yeah, so there's gonna be a big turnout. 1 o'clock at the Elks Club. Here's the proclamation for her.
Well, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to the next item, which are the agenda and the consent calendar. Are there any items to be added, deleted, or reordered? Ron?
No.
Laura?
No.
Dustin?
No, sir.
Councilmember McNellis?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
I have none. City manager?
No, sir.
City attorney?
Yes, sir.
Are there any speaker slips?
No, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Councilmember McNellis, second by Councilmember Trotter. Please vote. Lock in your votes.
Councilmember Hall, can you please lock in your vote?
Apparently not.
Motion carries unanimously.
That takes us to our, thank you very much. That takes us to our next item, which is non-agenda public comment.
I have three speakers. The first speaker, Rebecca Phillips. A reminder, you have three minutes.
Welcome.
Good evening, council members and residents of Santee, behind me. My name is Rebecca Phillips, and I'm 17 years old. I am not a resident of Santee, but I am employed at a local restaurant, The Omelet Factory, and I work out regularly at the Santee YMCA. Just two weeks ago, after finishing my shift at my job, I went to the gym to swim laps. As I was showering after my workout, I saw a naked male in the women's locker room. I immediately went back into the shower terrified and hid behind their flimsy excuse for a curtain until he was gone. I ran into a bathroom stall to change as quickly as I could, organizing my thoughts to share with the people at the front desk. As I did so, I could only think of my five-year-old sister, who I bring to this gym during the summer to, sorry, to enjoy their water slides. This is the YMCA, where hundreds of children spend their summer afternoons in childcare camps. This is the YMCA where my little sister took gymnastics lessons. The locker room was supposed to be her safe haven to gossip with her friends and shower and change. When I asked the YMCA management what their policy was regarding transgenders, they confirmed that the man that I saw was indeed allowed to shower wherever he pleased. As long as you are not a red flag on Megan's Law, the California Sex Offender Registry, a grown male can shower alongside a teenage girl at your YMCA location here in Santee. I was made to feel as though I had done something wrong when I talked to people at the YMCA. Somehow, the indecent exposure of a male to a female minor was an inconvenience to them. When my dad spoke to the sheriff's office, they told him that he should never allow me to shower there ever again. The YMCA wouldn't let my father speak to the manager of the Santee branch. After waiting several days, he finally received a call from Terry Moss, who is the Director of Membership for San Diego County. She informed my dad that I was not in any danger at the time of the incident, that I was safe. But I ask you this. I'm assuming all of you either have a wife, a sister, daughters, or granddaughters, or are a woman yourself. Could you knowingly send an underage girl into a room where there was a naked male and say that she was not in danger, that she was safe, or more importantly, that this was right? The fact that we are now tailoring our privacy policies and bathroom laws around transgenders, ignoring the... ignoring the blatant threat to safety that this poses, is obscene. The safety of children, girls, is on the chopping block. And this issue is not unique to one political party. Both Democrats and Republicans, whom I have shared this story with, have all been equally disgusted. So I implore you all to take action. With great privilege comes great responsibility. Whether it's requiring transgenders to use the single-sol family restrooms or making them use the bathroom which aligns with their biological trans...
Thank you. Thank you.
Next speaker I have is Dr. Brian McKinney.
Welcome.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Mento, councilmembers and residents of the City of Santee. My name is Dr. Brian McKinney. I am the new Assistant Director at CASA. And I am excited today to talk with you about a topic that is very important to me, health outcomes for our communities. As a doctor, it is very easy for me to say that tobacco use leads to disability, disease, and death. That is 100% true. It is also something we have likely heard before. And if the conversation stops there, I am concerned that we might forget that we now know so much more about tobacco, about nicotine, about addiction, that we can actually prevent some of that disability, that disease, and that death. Because what can be a little harder to talk about, and what is very important to me as a doctor, are health outcomes. Understanding not only where we are, but also what that means for our communities. And asking, what is our role in this process? So I would like to start by talking about where we are in terms of adult versus adolescent use of tobacco products, specifically e-cigarettes, or as the kids are calling them, vapes. A recent study found that 3% of adults in California use e-cigarettes. One of the lowest in our country, actually. Compare that to a recent study of youth risk behaviors in California found 18.2% of high school students in California use vapes. That's over 370,000 high schoolers and almost half of them report being daily users. 96% of them who do vape use flavors. And flavors have disproportionately affected our kids. And these numbers actually have real health consequences for our communities. Every year, 6,800 kids in California become new daily users of tobacco products. And then the evidence becomes strikingly clear. For every teenager who develops a nicotine addiction before the age of 18, 1 in 3 will quit, but 2 out of 3 will go on to develop a lifetime nicotine addiction. And half of those who do will die from a tobacco-related illness. That number is 441,000. That is the number of kids alive in California today who will ultimately die prematurely from using tobacco products. That is why I'm here today. Because of those 441,000. Because I have hope that those deaths can be prevented. I believe that prevention plays a huge role here and that preventing youth access to tobacco products is extremely important. So today, I ask that you please consider your important role as policymakers in the City of Santee to please help prevent these deaths.
I have a quick question. Medical doctor?
Yes.
Thank you.
The last speaker I have is Jean Duffy. You have three minutes. And a reminder to anybody who wants to speak on item 10, we need your speaker slip before the item is called. Thank you.
Welcome.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members and staff and community members. So I am Jean Duffy. Some of you may know me from Compaq as a member of the Santee Collaborative and as a public health advocate for CASA. So I'm here to give you some information about the flavored tobacco law that went into effect for the state of California on December 21st. So you probably know that Prop 31 passed, upholding Senate Bill 793, which prevents retailers from selling most flavored tobacco products, including menthol cigarettes and flavored vapes. This statewide law follows the leadership of more than 100 cities and counties that have already ended the sale of flavored tobacco products. Big Tobacco tried to fight these results by filing a motion to be heard in the Supreme Court, but they wouldn't even hear the case. So we know that 95% of adult smokers started before they were legally allowed to purchase tobacco products. And the tobacco industry hooks kids on vapes by using fun candy flavors that spark curiosity and make tobacco taste and smell good. That's put kids at risk of a lifetime of nicotine addiction, health problems, and premature death. We also know that if we make these products less accessible, fewer young people will use them. It is up to cities to make sure their stores are no longer selling flavored tobacco products. Local jurisdictions can ensure compliance by adopting a tobacco retailer license ordinance, which would, through the retailer fee, pay for compliance checks annually to not only check the sale of flavors, but also to assess if retailers are illegally selling to minors. This is something you should be concerned about because when we... CASA sent in underage youth into all your tobacco retail stores in Santee to purchase tobacco products, 68% of retailers sold. And that's a really high sales rate. TRLs do not penalize or criminalize individuals for attempting to purchase tobacco products, including flavors, but they do hold retailers accountable for selling. Nine jurisdictions, including San Diego County, have adopted TRLs to help enforce the law and to protect kids. So I've brought you some tools and we are here to support you in taking these important steps for Santee. So I'll leave these with you. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. That concludes our non-agenda public comment. Take us to public hearing. Item number 10, which is a public hearing for a tentative parcel map, TPM 2020-1, and development review permit, DR 2020-1, for a residential subdivision consisting of four single-family dwelling units located at 8732 Prospect Avenue in the low-medium-density residential R2 zone. The applicant is Palm Tree Investments. Michael?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. The .85-acre project site, addressed as 8732 Prospect Avenue, is located on the northwest corner of Prospect Avenue and Our Way is delineated in yellow here in this aerial before you. Our Way is a private access easement that traverses the easterly end of the subject property. The site is developed with a single-family residence that is currently unoccupied and will be demolished. The site is within the R2 low-medium-density residential zone and is immediately surrounded on all sides by the R2 zone and development consisting of one- and two-story single-family homes. Here is an existing view of the subject site looking northwest toward the site from the intersection of Our Way and Prospect Avenue. Here's a closer aerial view of the site with the boundaries of the subject parcel outlined in yellow. Here is the 25-foot-wide portion of Our Way that crosses the easterly end of the subject property. The proposed tentative parcel map would subdivide the subject parcel into four single-family residential lots, as delineated here. And the lots would range in size from 7,680 square feet to 9,550 square feet. Primary access to the lots would be provided by a new 45-foot-wide vehicular access easement connected to Our Way, as shown here. As part of the tentative parcel map conditions of approval, the project would also be required to make an irrevocable offer of dedication of 12 feet along Prospect Avenue frontage. The lots as proposed would meet the development standards for parcels in the R2 zone, including a minimum lot size, lot width, and lot depth. Here is the site plan of the proposed development, showing in greater detail the proposed improvements on the site. The four lots would be graded to create four pads that can each accommodate a single-family residence. The homes would be set back at least 20 feet from the new property lines. Grading would be minimal, as the lot is relatively flat. The new homes would gain access via a 26-foot shared driveway from Our Way, consisting of permeable pavers. And the frontage along Our Way would be widened from 25 feet, which is the existing condition, to 26 feet to meet the fire access standard. A 6-foot masonry-high wall would be constructed along Prospect Avenue. And Prospect Avenue would be improved with a landscape strip, curb, gutter, sidewalk, and pave-out of Prospect Avenue. The homes would be delivered pre-landscaped around the perimeter of the site, as shown in the area here, with drought-tolerant landscaping provided in the front yards and, as I mentioned, around the perimeter of the site. Three retaining wall segments would be provided, as shown here. The retaining walls would vary in height along Our Way from 1 to 2 and 1/2 feet. And a retaining wall would be placed on Lot 2 that would be up to 4 feet in height. Each home would also include a 6-foot wooden privacy fence enclosing the private yard areas. The existing mailbox along Our Way, which is currently shared by all residents along Our Way, would be preserved at its existing location. The proposed homes would each consist of two stories with a maximum height of 25 feet 6 inches, which is under the 35-foot height limit of the R2 zone. The homes would range in size from approximately 2,338 square feet to 2,747 square feet. Each home would have a distinct facade in the Spanish Colonial Revival architectural style as shown here in this exhibit. The proposed homes would meet the density, height, lot coverage, and setback requirements of the R2 zone and the high-quality design objectives of our general plan. The homes would be consistent with the development pattern in the area, which primarily consists of one- and two-story single-family homes. As the proposed project is a tentative parcel map consisting of four parcels that exempt from SEQA pursuant to Section 15315 of the SEQA Guidelines. At this time, staff would recommend that you open and close the public hearing, find the project exempt from SEQA, and approve the project by adopting the attached resolutions before you. The applicant has reviewed and accepted all project conditions and is present tonight to speak on behalf of the project. And this concludes staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. We have five speaker slips on this. We'll hear the speakers first.
First speaker I have is Keith Cobble, or Cobal.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, Santee residents. Now, I really don't have much to say. I wanted to hear other people first, actually. And it's funny that I got first picked. But I did have some questions and I don't know if you're going to answer them. I just want to propose them. My first question is... Is the parcel of land now... Is Our Way... Do they pay property tax on Our Way? Does that property pay property tax on Our Way? Do they have the right... I don't know if I want to say the right. Is there access from Our Way legally attached to the parcel of land? That would be the first thing. The reason I mention that is because we've had that road paved several times since I've lived there. And the previous owners never participated in that. So that's just my thinking that they shouldn't have access to Our Way. As I look at the map, I wonder, how come they don't use Prospect Avenue as their entry to go in and out of the property? Mostly because it's a Prospect address. Everyone that lives on Our Way, I think except for one resident, one of the first homes there, is a Prospect address. But everyone else has an Our Way address. And I don't know that these houses will have an Our Way address or a Prospect address. And another thing I'd like to question is... My mind's going blank. I wish I wasn't looking at that clock. Okay, so we just...
Take a deep breath.
The legal... Primarily legally, do they have... Oh, yeah. Do they have access to Our Way? And then the other concern is that Our Way is a narrow road. And with the residents that live there now, when we have even just even one or two extra guests show up at our house, it's fairly congested there. If you're going to add four more houses and they're going to use Our Way as their overflow parking, that's going to add additional congestion to that. That's a concern that I have. My mind's blank, so that's all I can think of. Those are questions. I know you're not going to answer them, but I'd like you to answer them as you talk amongst yourselves. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
The next speaker I have is Beth Atawasi.
Mister and madam City Council, I'm a resident of Our Way. In fact, my property is directly beside the lot in question. It's our understanding that the easement road of Our Way was designed for the purposes of benefiting those who live down Our Way. That that's what it was designated for decades ago. The subject property... Use of it was always on Prospect Avenue. And I am shocked to see for the first time tonight that we now have a proposition to put four large homes with access solely from Our Way, when the driveway access has always been on Prospect. The road of Our Way, we understand, is only partially owned by the lot owner in question. And the other part of the road, down the road, is owned by the other property owners on the other side. There has been no attempt to gain any easement or cooperation or road maintenance agreement or anything. We have maintained that road ourselves throughout the decades. Many of the owner occupiers of the property have lived there for decades. Some are tenants, but most of them have been there for a very long time, myself included. I understand that there's a 40-foot easement that's required for access to the improvements that are involved. And I don't know that that exists right now. I believe that the access should be on the property itself and not to encroach on the property owners surrounding it. There would be a density problem caused by this development. We have a tremendous parking issue on Our Way as it is. It's a humble, small, private road. We also have utilities issues. My own utilities go down the road. My... And I believe the other two original houses, there's three that were built back about 1961. The water access is right there at the corner. There is issues with sewer and water lines here. Also, Cox is our internet provider and our cable provider in the area. I've been trying to get another one out there. We do have poor connectivity there. So our properties would be burdened. The issues are self-imposed by creating... Attempting to create four lots. It's all...
The final... The next speaker I have is Bill Howland.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and guests. I have two properties on Our Way. And we... A lot of the concerns that she's brought up are same concerns that I have. The traffic already on that road is... In passing, if any other car comes, it's very difficult to pass. Plus, the properties down below have a lot of water issues. The flow of water of more hardscape and so forth coming off that into the property. And I'd like to know how and what they're doing with the drainage of all the water because it drains... because it drains all the way down the two parcels, all the parcels below there, which causes a lot of problems as far as surface water. Also, I'd like to know, again, over the years, we've repaved the road, we've maintained it periodically and never had any cooperation, or any, anything from this particular parcel, which that would have been a prior owner, but that's been something that has never been any participation on us, and we've shouldered the cost of resurfacing and putting the bumps and so forth in those roads. Those are the main things I'm concerned with, and also all the other items that she's brought up in the past. So, thank you very much for considering our views.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Rebecca Kennedy.
I'm coming to you as a resident. I'm an original resident.
Excuse me, you're going to need to get closer to the microphone. Just pull it up, pull over.
Is that better?
If you don't know, no one will be able to hear you.
Anyway, so, I'm here as a resident of Our Way. My husband and I built our house there in 1978. I've lived in Santee for over 60 years. We've had the house on Our Way right where they want to put this access to these four homes in, right across from my home. Literally, I have, it's just, my husband and I had, my husband had a verbal agreement with the original owner there that, you know, we had this access, and that was for us. It wasn't for anyone else. And my property line actually goes to the fence line, and like what was presented about the water, the Cox Cable, and many different things on our street are just extremely questionable, extremely questionable. And like I said, for a resident, for being there since 1978, I've lived in Santee, like I said, for over 60 years. Been here, worked here, everything, and it's like, what they are proposing with these four houses is very overwhelming to some of us residents that have been here for a while. Like we've said, we have had to take care of the street ourselves, we pay for that. It's never been paid for through the city, it's always been paid for through the residents. And for what they want to take to put those four homes in is just overwhelming to us, extremely overwhelming to us, you know? And I just come to you as, you know, saying that this is a concerning matter to us, as living here for so many years, and taking care of our residents, and our families, and our neighbors, and everyone that lives within our little neighborhood. And I just hope and pray that we can come to some sort of, sorry.
Sorry.
Thing to keep it under control.
Thank you.
You know? But I thank you so much for your time, and I just, you know, pray that we can get this all underway. And, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Still about 32 seconds. My uncle was a fireman here at Santee. He was the first fireman that retired from the city of Santee. Harry Bell, yes, was my uncle. Yeah, yes. And yes, he has, I have his placard. Like I said, we've been here in Santee for a long time.
Thank you.
What is it?
The Trenches Driveway.
Yeah, the Trenches, yes.
Trying to get out on the Prospect.
Yeah, yes, that's, yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay, the final speaker I have is Lacey Kennedy Cornejo.
Need you to put a speaker slip in for the baby.
She just turned one. Hello, City Council and Mayor. Sorry. My name is Lacey Kennedy. I am the daughter of Rebecca Kennedy. My family owns the second home on Our Way.
Like mother-daughter, you have to get next to the microphone.
Oh, sorry.
So pull it on over.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
Let's go ahead and restart.
Thank you. Okay. Once again, my name is Lacey Kennedy. We are the owners of the second home on Our Way. I was born and raised in the home. I'm 43 years old. My children now occupy the home with myself and my husband. From what we've always understood, there was no access from Our Way to that lot. It's always been Prospect Avenue. I grew up with the children that lived in that home. It's always been that home entrance on Prospect, adding that burden to our private drive. My home shows different boundary lines to what this gentleman came to the site today and discussed with us. None of the residents had viewed or seen any of this prior. Actually, some, can I actually ask all the residents of Our Way and the surrounding, can they stand?
Actually, you need to address us, Lacey.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can they just stand so I can show you guys how many people?
Well, we might be able to ask that question later.
Oh, gotcha, okay. But, all these people are here just with the concern, there's over 19 homes already that are accessing Our Way, and one of them turns into a single lane. Trash trucks come, our cable lines, power lines are getting knocked down. Cox Cable's telling us they can't facilitate faster service. Some, we have residents that are small businesses, children on homeschool, the roads would have to be dug up. All of these crazy things have to happen in order for these four homes to be built. Not only does it affect the traffic, there's already a parking issue. There is no parking. Like I said, it's a single lane. We would really like there to be further review of our title and our paperwork that, like I said, might show different boundaries than what we were displayed today, as well as there's many neighbors that, if there's four two-story houses, they have no view. There's homes that are literally going to be boxed in. That presentation doesn't show the rest of the neighborhood, you know? Our home is directly across from it, so it's definitely a burden to us. But the other homes, there's a lot of serious concerns where there's going to be multiple homes that have the KB Home Development, as well as these other new proposed developments. It's already a problem, it's already a safety concern, it's already a safety concern with the children. There's a home daycare business that's two houses down. There's just so many concerns as to why the access has to be from Our Way, which we've always paid and maintained as private residents, as well as why the entrance can't be from Prospect Avenue. It had to do with lot size and what they could fit in the property, and I've discussed that with the.
Great. Well, thank you, Lacey. That's all of them, right? All right. I'm going to go ahead and go first on some questions here. Michael, you're going to need to come up. And can you bring up the slide that shows the four properties, and actually, the one that shows the, that one right there? Thank you. So, I guess I would ask the question also, what is it about this lot, the four lots being broken up, that would require that access from Our Way instead of Prospect?
Project proponent, in order to try to accommodate the four lots, needed access from Our Way. And also because Prospect Avenue is a collector roadway with a high speed of traffic, our preference as well is to limit new driveways along Our Way.
Okay, so, the thing is that we have a lot of houses down there that have access right off of Prospect, that have been there since before incorporation. So, you know, I, we're going to get to some of these questions that you had, so I do need to have it quiet. Thank you very much, appreciate it. So, I mean, obviously, I'm not an engineer, I'm not a planner. If I look at that lot, there's questions about how things could be done maybe a little bit differently, and maybe the answer would come from the developer, because when you say, well, the developer looked at it and they, to make it work, had to put it there, well, I guess the question is, why does it have to be like that to make it work? So I don't know if you could answer that?
I think, so in order to meet our minimum lot depth and lot width requirements, they would have to configure it in this fashion. Otherwise, they may not be able to meet those minimum requirements from the R2 Zone. So I think that they created this configuration in order to maximize the number of lots on the property.
Okay. So currently, Our Way is 25 feet, you said? It's going to be made bigger to 26 feet?
Yeah, so there'll be a little sliver, a one-foot sliver along their portion of Our Way that would be paved out. They would also put in curb and gutter here.
No sidewalk?
And no sidewalk, it'd be, because there's existing infrastructure there that serves the other properties behind this one along Our Way, they would put, they wouldn't place permanent improvements like a sidewalk. It would be a DG walkway. This would be a DG walkway that would connect the sidewalk from Prospect to the new homes here.
All right. So then, there will be no dedication there, irrevocable?
Not to the city because it's a private drive. There'd be an additional easement, a flowage easement, and that additional foot along Our Way for the additional pave-out.
Okay, so, here's what I'm getting to, though, is that we're going to leave that a private street.
Yes.
And we're putting in four new homes that are, the residents that live there will be using, and they're causing wear and tear. What is their obligation to maintain that road, then?
They're required by the conditions of approval and by the establishment of the HOA to maintain their portion of the roadway.
So they would have to enter into an agreement with existing folks that live in there, property owners?
Well, as to the remainder of the, of Our Way, they would have to have a private agreement, as currently exists, with all the other neighbors who share Our Way. There's no recorded maintenance agreement for the roadway, because it predates the California Subdivision Map Act, the creation of these parcels.
That doesn't preclude them from creating one, though, right?
They could each, they would each individually have to enter into that private agreement.
That's where I'm getting to, because I think it's, it was a good question about, you know, we've been paying for this for years, and now we have wear and tear coming to the neighborhood. What is their obligation? Was, how come that couldn't be widened any more than just the extra foot?
So they were just meaning our fire requirement of 26 feet, and that's why they were, and that just, the fire marshal, that it was reviewed and approved by the fire marshal as proposed for fire access.
So now you have that new property line, back of, was it 15 feet? Back of the curb is actually the property line, or where's that at now?
So it'd be 26 feet from the curb to property line.
So then...
Property line's on seven, right?
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah. Well, where I'm getting at is that, it seems to me like they could have taken more of that lot and actually put in curb, gutter, and sidewalk in that side so that people could actually park against it, and that would also widen the road so that people can get in and out. Just a thought. And then also, the water issues that were talked about and the drainage, is there any going, what are we doing here for storm drains and connecting and all that kind of stuff?
I'll just give a general overview, and maybe Carl, our city engineer.
I can actually weigh in on that, Michael. So, they're actually going to be conditioned with final improvement plans to submit a drainage study. Currently, everything in this whole area, there's no drainage pipes, everything sheet flows. This was all developed prior, you know, prior to Subdivision Map Act, prior to drainage law. It meanders and follows the original path of flow. They're not proposing changing that, but they will be required to submit a drainage study with final improvement plans, and we'll evaluate it at that time. I think tentatively, they're planning to continue the drainage in the exact same pattern that exists today, and they're adding very minimal impervious area, because they're putting permeable pavers and all that, so it's not really going to increase, very minimal increase of drainage, if any, with impervious area. So we'll certainly evaluate that during final plans.
It just seems to me we should have seen that drainage planned before we got this Okay, that's all I have. Laura?
Yeah, thank you. So I wrote down a lot of similar notes, but is it accurate that there possibly could be discrepancy in title of property lines? Or, since it's such an old property?
I would defer that to our city engineer. It has been reviewed by our engineer.
They actually had a, did a title report and a title search on it, and I would point out, there's also a 25-foot easement on the other side of Our Way on those three properties that was recorded in 1977. So in front of the houses, a few of those individuals, at least on the title report we have and we've reviewed and looked at, there's actually another 25-foot easement on the other side that provides access exclusively for those three properties, the way it's written. Again, all prior to Subdivision Map Act, so they're kind of written kind of oddly and differently, not typically what we would see today. So it's not really right-of-way, and, you know, it's kind of like a fence line between you and your neighbor today. It's a shared agreement. You either agree to replace it together or not. It's kind of along those lines. That's how the private streets are kind of handled. It's a private arrangement between those homeowners. It's not built to public street standards. We don't accept it until it's built to public street standards, because it's just too costly for us to maintain, like we would do a new subdivision. So that's why we're not requesting curb, gutter, sidewalk, and all those type of improvements we normally see with a subdivision, because it is a private street, not owned and maintained by the city.
Another comment I have is, you know, to me, it just doesn't make sense to have a new house and new development and all this beautiful landscaping, and have finally some more sidewalk on Prospect Avenue, but then if the entrance, you know, people would walk from their homes to Prospect, then there's no sidewalk there, you know? And DG, to me, is not the right solution for something like that. I understand, you know, I have a better understanding now, due to the age of the road and how these agreements happened, you know, in the 60s or 70s. It's very different from what we do today, but, you know, my home is, was built in 1959 in Santee, so very old. And on the one side, you know, we are tasked to build homes, and we can't deny that. And so when I hear, I know that if you've lived somewhere a long time and you haven't had neighbors close at all, it's like, oh my gosh. I have a big backyard, too, right? I have some space, but right behind my home, they can build R7, which R2 is four, you know, R7 is a lot more density right behind my home. And, you know, and I struggle with that as well, you know? Just, I know that there will be several stories, not just a two-story home, not a single-family home, one day behind my home that I've lived in for a very, very long time. So, that doesn't, but ours was a development, and the city does maintain our streets, and we do have sidewalks and all those kinds of things, so it is different from your situation. I haven't been out there, but it, you know, to hear that some people contribute to maintaining the road and some people don't, that's troublesome, too. And then if new people come in, I don't know how that agreement works, but that just doesn't, I wouldn't have confidence in that, that they're going to fork over their fair share to pay for the Our Way improvements, where these people have lived there a long time and they're dedicated to doing that. So I'm uncomfortable with that part. How many parking, are there, is, are there all two-car garages?
Yes. Each home would have a two-car garage.
And then on the little access, you know, the frontage paver road, is there parking there?
Yes, there'd be a 20-foot-deep driveway in front of each garage that could accommodate two additional vehicles.
So two in the garage, which, that doesn't happen, you know? And then two in front of it, and no parking, you can't see what I'm looking at, but just in that strip, once you get in there, no parking and no sidewalk along the road where it's... there, no parking and no sidewalk along the road where it sounds like a lot of other people already park. I, I mean, technically, it meets our parking standards, but it, it sounds like just the rest of that drive, there's a lot, it's, it's, it's just troublesome for me.
Right, yeah.
So, and that's a pre-existing condition. So I, what I, I'm trying to say, like, to say that nothing can't be built there ever, that's not realistic, but we're, we would want to try to work with you all to see what, you know, works as best as can be for everybody. And then I'll just add a little comment, since I am a park director and Wi-Fi access is a big, big issue down, it sounds like where you live. There is a, a system called Starlink that you could research in lieu of Cox Cable, and it goes on top of your roof. And it's satellite cable, and it's very fast and very reliable, so something to look at in your community. Those are my questions for now.
I'm sorry, the comment period is over. Thank you. Rob, you want to go?
Yeah. So there, there's been no private road maintenance agreement on this property, recorded at, at any time thus far?
Pardon?
Private road maintenance agreement?
No, there's no private road maintenance agreement recorded.
Okay, and we, are we requiring that for this section of the road that there is now a, a recorded maintenance agreement?
For their section, it would be actually a condition of approval.
To have a recorded?
Part of the CCNRs of the, so it would be recorded.
So that section from, into perpetuity, will be required to be maintained?
Yes, absolutely.
If they don't do it, it's something that city can't come in and enforce as a lien against the property taxes at a later time?
Yes, that's correct, sir.
Okay. Did I hear, I was, Carl, did I hear you correctly that on the, and I'm getting lost in direction, on the, on our way right here, that, that, that this is, represents currently, actually, can you go to slide number, what, I think it's three? There you go. The section in blue, well, there you go, there you go. That that's currently 25 feet wide?
The, the existing easement from the title report is indicated as 25 feet.
That section in blue right there is 25 feet wide?
And then I also mentioned opposite to the east for the benefit of those three properties.
There's another 25 feet.
There's another 25 feet.
It's just currently being, it's just got trees on it.
It's not being used.
Yeah, but that's, there, there is an easement there.
Yeah, and it's, it's, it's just based on the nature of the way it all developed because, you know how flag lots work? They needed to provide access for the right side and the left side, and that's, I mean, and again, strictly off title report.
Okay. So there is actually, it had the potential, it was supposed to be 50 feet. It's just this, on the other side, it got utilized for parking.
Again, it's not a simple, without getting into details, it's not as simple as that because it's only granted to certain lots and certain individuals. We don't do it that way anymore. At the time, the owners, it was granted to the individual. Then you get in, I'm not an attorney, so I wouldn't venture to guess how those are conveyed and, and dealt with, so, but there was a dedicated and it's represented on title a 25-foot easement for the benefit of three lots.
And so these, and this, this section that we're referring to right here, this, 100% of that in blue is part and parcel of the original...
It's actually owned in fee by that, by this property with an easement granted for access to people behind them.
With, with an easement?
Yes.
Okay. That's already answered. Well, so will it be a new utility drop being brought to the property line?
That'll be in final engineering, but I can say, there's also a utility easement on our way on this exact same 25-feet sewer water, and everything else is on, is, has an easement for that. And they are all served perpendicular from that as well. And assuming when final design, they would be served perpendicular from our way as well, from those existing services. So, the, the overhead, the electrical is served overhead from a SDGNE power line. That's a, again, another odd easement. It's a single-line easement with no defined width, that's the way they did it, to every house. But the underground sewer water, those are all served underground with a Pottery Dam easement on our way.
I'm gonna have to ask you not to make comments.
The, so the big, I mean, the biggest concern I have, frankly, is drainage, drainage concerns, and it's because of what we've, we've dealt with here in the past. When you don't have undergrounding of the drainage or proper flow, you can, you can utilize natural berms and things of that nature from the onset, but somebody decides they move in there, they don't like having a natural berm, and they want to level out their backyard or front yard, and they level that out, and it completely throws off the, the watershed.
That, that would be a code compliance issue we would deal with at that time. I mean, that's not uncommon. You're, you're correct.
Yeah.
That does happen. I, I would say currently, the pattern of drainage indicated, to the best of our knowledge, without final plans, it sheet flows, it finds its way to the northeast corner of the property, and then drains down our way, like pretty much every property on here does. They meander and follow, and then go to the north all the way to Mission Gorge Road. Kind of meandering through backyards, side yards, it's kind of a, it just followed the natural drainage pattern that existed prior to any homes being developed out there.
And there's no way to flow those, or to level that so that it goes down towards Prospect where there's actual...
No, because it's actually lower than Prospect Avenue. This parcel is.
Okay, I'm good right now.
That's actually where I was gonna, not necessarily start, but I had that in my notes here, too, Carl. So part of the issue, let's start with the driveway. Is the driveway currently off of Prospect for that existing home?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So what I see going on here is an elevation issue. So what is the difference between the pad level at parcel two, or parcel one, either one, and the street? Because that's part of the reason why he's taking the driveway.
It's not very much because the entire grading is less than 300 cubic yards.
Okay.
For the whole lot. It's very flat. But it is lower, and it, and it tends to go, the, the grade goes to the north, lower than Prospect Avenue.
You mentioned the utilities, and I had the same question, was the, the water and the sewer both coming off our way, but where's the electric coming from?
It's overhead serve from a power line that actually follows right along parcels one and parcel two on the yellow line. There's an overhead power line and an easement for SDGNE there.
See a shadow for a pole, is that an actual pole there?
Yeah, there's actually a pole right on the corner of the property there.
So it will be undergrounded from that for those houses, or still going to be overhead?
They'll stay overhead because that's not, there's no nexus to underground for the off-site houses.
Okay.
Real quick, is there a secondary pole?
There's a secondary pole in the middle of the lot between parcels one and parcel two. That essentially serves homes to the south.
Yeah, I, I'm thinking of a secondary pole, that, a pole that would go, that would feed from northbound on our way.
Yeah, there's, there's multiple series of poles, I think, along our way that go, service all 19 lots along that, that stretch.
They're fairly far, they're fairly far apart.
Yeah.
Two poles.
Carl, the, the drainage coming off of Prospect where it says Prospect Avenue with the R is?
Mm-hmm.
There's some kind of inlet there or something. Where, where does that go?
That, that's the same. It kind of finds its path, and it finds its way over to Mission Gorge Road through backyards and side yards traditionally.
So there's no...
There's, there's no drainage easements, no drainage structures, no facilities at all for drainage anywhere in this whole, as these subdivided and were built.
The permeable surface that, that's going in is obviously to maintain the water on property, all right, on, on the parcels. That's part of the reason...
Yeah, the, the point of Hydromod, you know, where we, they cannot increase the flow leaving the property, so they will be providing stormwater features to retain and not release more water.
You expect other things other than the permeable ser, permeable surface, like basins or any other?
Uh, yeah, there's going to be some basins along our way. They have proposed them. We don't have final design on them, but they're conditioned, in the conditions of approval, they're conditioned to study those and build them to our satisfaction. So that the flow is not increased.
Yeah, there's an elevation, steeper there coming off of Prospect, it'll be elevation change. And the utilities, all.
Yeah, when you're talking at drainage, you can kind of see on the northeast corner, there's riprap and a basin, kind of preliminary laid out that Michael's identifying there. That's the anticipated location of the retention, so to speak, and stormwater feature.
I've got a history question, if you, maybe you have it. So you, you talked about 1977 title report, when these other homes across the street were, you know, parts of our...
It's, it's actually convoluted. I, I can read you what it actually says. It's brief.
Let me just ask my, let me ask my question, and maybe you can, I'll go from there.
So, on the tentative parcel map, it basically says, "An existing 25-foot offset private access easement per deed recorded June 25, 2019, as instrument to 2019 blah, 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 of official record and deed recorded August 6, 26, 1977." For these three lots, which are APN 383, 11244, or it's for the benefit through lot 383, which is the very corner, to the next two lots for their benefit, so that those three lots will have access off Prospect Avenue. That's the best I can ascertain based off the title report, what the intent was.
So, those three lots you're referring to, and I'm guessing a few other ones behind that, there were one larger parcel at one time?
They were.
They were, right? And so what are those, what size are those parcels today, those current homes, roughly? 10, 12,000 square feet? They're a little larger than these, so...
Yeah, I, I don't know specifically, I'm sorry.
No, it's okay, I just, I'm...
They are larger than these, typically.
Trying to look at, you know, where things have gone. I mean, these were all larger parcels at one time. They all have been carved up and cut down to smaller parcels to accommodate more homes. You know, the problem they were dealing with is there's a private road, ultimately, it's...
Yeah, I mean, this goes all the way back to the 1898 map, Rancho subdivision map, and it was one parcel, then it got subdivided, and, and this has happened multiple times throughout the years. And prior to subdivision map act, there were no requirements and conditions for drainage and those kinds of things. That's why it exists that way today.
I don't know if we need to develop here or not, but Michael, you, you made a comment, and that was your opinion here, about why the lots were carved the way they were. It appears to me, and maybe you can tell me, is the, what is the length of this lot? Because it appears to be longer in depth than it is wider.
Oh, let me go back to the lot.
What I can see on the tentative parcel map, it's hard to see, but it looks like 198 feet one way and 192 and a half the other way?
You're the...
Yeah, okay, I gotta write. I see it on this, I can't see it on paper.
Yeah.
So it's actually deeper than it is wider. So what it's going is, but you flip this around, you put the road off the other direction, you, the lots are deeper than they are wider. I mean, it can be cut. Yeah, basically, I mean, it can be cut any which different way. So I don't know if that's a, if that was a reason? Is it, is it a setback issue, the depth of it? Is it the utilities? Is it the, the elevation change? Does anybody have a, a thought?
Originally, when they, when they tried to configure the lots with access from Prospect, it was difficult to meet the setbacks of the homes and also the lot dimension requirements and the access and the grade difference because the differential is from Prospect rather than from the side access to our way.
So that effort was exhausted?
Yes.
Was looked at, okay?
It never was?
It was. He's, he's saying it was, it was looked at. Let's give it to...
I'm not sure.
10 feet. That's all I've got right now.
Real quick question, though, is interesting sizes of parcels because an average part of pad right now in Santee is about 6,000 square feet, right?
Yes, that's the minimum lot size for the R2 zone.
Right.
6,000 square feet.
I mean, there's, I think there's ways of probably cutting this down so that you could get closer to even a 6,000 square foot. So, because some of it looks even like it's unused, and one of my concerns is that the, the one where you show the vegetation that goes around, and it's going to be outside of a fenced yard of those homes, who takes care of that? Who maintains that? And then, I hate to say it, but is, what's the access to it? Because now I'm worried about, you know, homeless people climbing the back of a, you know, fenced in and, and walled-in area, and now we have fire problems, we have trash problems and rat problems and other things of that nature. Whereas if it's left open or the fence line goes to the property line, then you have property owners then that are maintaining that.
So we're requiring them to establish an HOA to maintain that common landscaping.
Ron, did you have anything?
Well, first of all, I think it's obvious that we're not real happy with this project. It's, it's, it's just, it's a mess, pure and simple. Go back to the next slide back where you got the picture of it. Keep going. Keep going. I want to see the actual...
The tentative map?
Yeah. So, again, the 9,000 square feet, and this is kind of what the mayor was saying, this is where I was going to go with it, too. You're going to tell me you can't come up with another 15-foot, put a sidewalk in and a walking path and, and kind of clean it up, and you're going to tell me you can't take that 7,600 and put in a, a better recovery area for water? It just, it doesn't, this is Walker Trails when we first started, all over again. I just see this being a problem, and it just isn't making any sense to me. If these people are going to come in here and do this, they need to be part of the community. They're just wanting to slap up four houses here and basically make it their way. I don't, it's like, they could just name it their way now rather than our way. So basically, it's, it's, you turn, the, the little left turn in there, I still think they could come off Prospect, but I won't argue that part. I would not finish this project without an agreement where they're going to fix that road because they're SOL if they say, yep, we're not interested. And then they're buying a road, and the, the people on our way are buying a road. And I just, the water issue bothers me, the sidewalks bother me, the cable bothers me, you know? You have a major housing development right next door. You're, you can't tell, you can't run electrical and from next door over there? It's just, the whole thing makes no sense to me. Somebody's going to have to dig a trench, and somebody's going to have to put some cable in there, and somebody's going to have to put some, some electrical in there. Because we have the underground right now, we're trying to underground the whole city, but yet let's throw up four houses here with the, the wired electrical. You know, it just, the, the whole thing doesn't make any sense. We're being too nice to this guy. If he wants to build these houses, you can build them, but we got to put some rules and regulations on these things. So that would be my suggestion. I'm a, I'm a no vote on this. Sorry.
Is, is the developer here, you said?
I asked about...
Yeah, I, I'd like for you to come up, and I don't know if you have a...
She's not the developer, is she?
What?
Is she? Okay.
Okay, come on up, we'll have, just have you put in the speaker slip later.
She did, she did.
Oh.
She told me I was too late.
Okay, well, I'm calling you up.
Can you put her name in?
Yeah, we, we already have your stuff. Just for the record, please say your name.
So my name is Tricia Estrada. I'm not a huge developer, as you can see, I'm...
We understand that.
You know, I'm a, a private party that purchased the lot that, you know, with the hopes to develop the four houses, that eventually we keep long-term. My kids will have houses here, my son goes to champion gymnastics. You know, we've been here in the community for a while. So for some of the questions that have been going on, we would love to go off Prospect. You know, Michael, I just met him now, I've been working with the city for the last two and a half years, and there's been a lot of back and forth of what I can and cannot do with this lot. So I've been trying to comply with every city regulation that has kind of been informed.
Need you to keep up with the microphone.
So I've been trying to comply with all of the different city regulations based on, you know, the rules and, and requirements that have been laid on the parcel. So if I could go through Prospect, that was my number-one goal. I was told I couldn't. So because our way, that 25-feet easement, is part of our property, that's where I was restricted to have access to. Now regarding parking, it is our intention to have the 26-foot-wide private road that goes into those four houses, so that will also provide more parking for our four, which shouldn't have an off-spill, it shouldn't touch anywhere of our way. But again, if the communication is open to come off Prospect, I would be willing to talk to that about it.
You know what?
I think we need to send it back and have him relook at it.
But is there, is there an agreement on that? Okay. Sean, how, how can we do that with an action?
You can, I don't know if you need to take an action. I mean, you can just say, listen, we want to direct staff to look at these issues and work with the community, bring it back, and do it, do it that way. If you want to give specific direction, obviously, you can, you can and should do that. I don't think you need to formalize it in, in a motion, though.
Okay, well, then, we'll just give it, direction staff. I, we would like to probably hear more about what you can maybe do to get a Prospect Avenue entrance. And also, I got to tell you, I drive by this several times a day, because I just live down the street. And I'd love to see this developed, because, you know, this is a haven for, you know, people to come to. You probably had to clean it out more than once.
For three years, we've continued to call the sheriff, because we have looting and we have homeless people, and I'm trying to keep them out as much as possible. So I'd love to be able to improve the project. I mean, that is the goal. And actually, I welcome the neighbors. Unfortunately, with COVID, I haven't been able to meet them all, because of course, we should maintain, you know, if we had an our way access, absolutely, it would be a responsibility.
You need, need to.
Sorry. It's, it's, yes, so our way, it is part of the parcel that I purchased. So the 25-foot, so I'm happy to.
Remind me your name again?
Tricia Estrada.
Tricia.
Yes.
We're going to send this back to staff to have another look at it and to work on it. I don't expect this to take another two years.
I hope not.
And because I don't want anybody to go broke while they're doing this. And, but let's, let's work on something that is much more collaborative and acceptable to the community.
I think that would be great.
Yeah? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's talk later. No.
Do you have a question?
No.
Can you clarify, you chose two parcel twos.
No, we're, we'll talk about it afterwards.
Talk about a typo.
There is two parcel twos.
I got a four.
All right, then. All right, that takes us to item number 11, which is new business introduction and first reading of an ordinance to add section 7.20, point 100 to the Santee Municipal Code to protect the San Diego River Corridor. And who's giving this one?
Mayor, I'm, do the presentation. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. This item is the recommended introduction and first reading of an ordinance to protect the San Diego River Corridor. If you go to the next slide, please. The San Diego River Corridor has always been an important part of the city and the city's long-term planning. Most recently, in March of 2021, the City Council reaffirmed the importance of this corridor by establishing a policy goal of creating a San Diego River area safety plan to address conditions in the river. Since the establishment of that goal, multiple actions have taken place, both with the City Council and with staff, including but not limited to declaring various states of emergency in the river, so that staff could expedite work to clear brush and do other fire suppression work. Council has also used funding to establish relationships with a variety of nonprofits to help address conditions in the river. The city manager has established a working group that is focused on conditions in the river. So a lot has occurred already to implement the policy goal of creating a safe, clean, and healthy habitat for all users of the river. And today is another step in that direction through the consideration of an ordinance that I'll talk about in more detail. Next slide, please. So as you know, and the community is well aware, the River Corridor is a very valuable community resource, not only to city residents, but it's a draw to people from outside the city who come to experience the trails and other amenities. But the, the River Corridor is vulnerable to the effects of human actions. So obviously, there's issues with fire, there's issues with flooding, where there's trash, debris, and other human-created impediments that affect the flow of water in the river and can exacerbate flooding, particularly in times like we're experiencing now, where we have potentially heavy rains, and that's a very dangerous condition. There are also water pollution issues, where the presence of people within the river leads to the presence of bacteria. There are, there are metals that are left and things like batteries and other things that are left within the river that are harmful. And then again, trash, which is both a pollutant and also an impediment for flooding. And then the habitat in the area is very sensitive, and so the presence of human, humans on a regular basis that's unmanaged can create problems for that habitat. So next slide, please. So in addition to those issues, I want to kind of focus a little more on, on fire, which I know is something that the council is acutely aware of. I know many of you have, you know, visited the river when there are fires within the river and know the problems that are created there. But basically, this habitat is very susceptible to fires. Our area, of course, is very susceptible to fires. There's evidence in the proposed ordinance that, you know, most of the wildfires, 85% is the number in the ordinance, are human-created. And so when you have people living in a condition, in a place that can quickly burn, you have a problem. And if you go to the next slide, we have experienced that problem, and really in the last two-plus years, it's been very, very bad. This is a map that generally shows the River Corridor and over 200 fires that have been reported in, within the River Corridor. Now, these maps, where these dots are, are actually where the reports of the fire occurred, but you can see they're all congregated within the, the River Corridor, both the main stem of the San Diego River and then also Forester Creek area. And through the work of your fire department and the sheriff and others, thus far, the, those fires have been able to be quickly contained. But I know many of you have experienced the danger that's presented by these fires. And, and there have been, you know, burns that have gone all the way up to, to homes, edges of homes. And I think at previous workshop, we've seen pictures of the flames, you know, right next to homes. And so obviously, this is a major issue that needs to be addressed. Next slide. So in collaboration with the city manager's office, with the fire department, with the sheriff, with DDS and other staff, we've developed an ordinance that really tries to focus on the root causes of the problems that exist in the, in the river. And they're really, again, focused on the specific activities that create the problems. And so the proposed ordinance would address the fire issue, the flooding issue, water quality, and issues with regard to habitat. There, there were specific prohibitions in the ordinance. The first two really relate to fire. So using an ignition source within the, the river, which could cause or with the intent to cause a fire, would be prohibited. So that would be a misdemeanor. It would also be subject to immediate abatement. Similarly, we want to get to the, just the fact that people have ignition sources and are in that area on a regular basis. And so there would be a prohibition for using or having an ignition source when you're engaged in certain activities within the River Corridor. Similarly, you know, the, a major problem, as I mentioned, is that people are present in the river, and that leaves debris and other material that changes the flow of the river and increases flooding. And so being in the river area and causing those activities to occur that change the flow or could change the flow of the water within the system would be a prohibited activity. Similarly, discharging or, or, you know, causing to exist pollutants or other waste within the river would be a prohibitive activity. And then also, activities that would harm species or destroy critical habitat would be prohibited. So again, we've really tried to focus on the root causes of the problem, and we've worked with the sheriff in terms of being able to cite and enforce for these things. And so we're, we're very comfortable in, in recommending these prohibitions to you. If you go to the next slide. In addition to making the activities very specific and targeted, the area that we, that these activities are prohibited within is also very specific. And we work closely with, with DDS to identify the specific parcels that would be covered by this ordinance. And so in the ordinance itself, those areas are identified. And then there's an illustrative map. Here's the, the western part of the main stem of the San Diego River. If you go to the next slide, that's the middle area. And then the next slide, that's the, the eastern portion. And then the final slide is the Forester Creek area. So again, very targeted on the areas where we're experiencing these problems, and very targeted to the activities that would be prohibited. So if you go to the next slide. Next slide. So our recommendation is for you to introduce and conduct the first reading of the proposed ordinance, to set the ordinance for a second reading on the January 25th, 2023. And then there are findings within the ordinance that the activity is either not subject to sequoia or it is subject to a specific exemption, including exemptions related to preventing fires and fire mitigation activities. One final note, if, if the council is supportive of this effort, once the ordinance is in place, we'll be working closely with the sheriff's department to develop a process where we'll actively and aggressively enforce the ordinance. You know, we're trying to time this so that we can get out in front of the next dry season, where we're, you know, going to start experienced fires. We're getting plenty of rain, which is great, but as you know, that just heightens the, the fire risk in the future. So we want to be very progressive and, and get out in front of these issues. So we'll work with the sheriffs and, and others within the city, and then our office would be the ones that would be enforcing these. So these aren't just things we would allow to go to the court and sit on the DA's desk. These are things that we would enforce ourselves. And then, as I mentioned, within the ordinance, there is, there are times when we, the, the fire department identifies a very specific immediate risk. And so under the new ordinance, we would have the ability to declare that an emergency and abate immediately. So we wouldn't have to wait 72 hours to, you know, hope nothing happens. We would be able to address those conditions immediately. So again, that's our recommendation. We're happy to answer questions. I know the, the fire chief has been deeply involved in this and, and has a lot of information. So he's available for questions as well as the city manager. Thank you very much.
Are there any speaker slips?
No speakers.
Thank you. One?
Are we going to need to budget any extra money for sheriffs to do this, or are you guys going to be able? I know the answer is yes, but, but you, could you handle extra?
Yeah, so we would, it would be similar to what we have now, where, as available, we have special details of deputies that, that patrol the riverbed.
Okay. My, my concern there is, as available, would, could we get a special detail going maybe or something?
Well, we currently have special details in forms, in the form of homeless outreach that go down there on a regular basis. And obviously, we'd continue that.
Okay.
And, and continue the extra patrols of the riverbed that we currently have going on.
Okay.
Yeah, Councilmember, if I might, it's not really the lack of the staff and the, the sheriff's commitment and presence, it's really the lack of the legal tools to be able to cite and prosecute. And that's what we're adding with this action tonight.
Correct. I just want, I just, if we're going to enforce, let's make sure, go in full, full force. I think that's it. I'll make a motion to approve. I like that, yeah.
Thank you. Dustin, comments?
Just actually, to law enforcement, not so much, Captain, you are comfortable with this? You've been in the, you've been in this task force and working with this throughout here?
I am very comfortable and supportive of it.
This gives you guys a lot more teeth to.
Absolutely.
To do things that we've asked.
We can use all the teeth we can get, because quite frankly, sir, we haven't had much legal teeth lately. And so anything that can give us more, I'm all in favor of, absolutely.
Yeah, so I do want to commend, you know, staff, this is something that we put as a council priority two years ago at our, our last workshop. And, you know, two years is a long time, but, you know, we finally got into, to something. So I, again, just want to commend staff for, for getting there right now, and I'll second Councilman Hall's motion.
Thank you. Laura?
I'm definitely very pleased to see this come forward. And as a resident that lives very close to this activity, and has been frightened many times and evacuated my home with my neighbors, you know, I thank you all for working on this and being on the forefront of it. Other communities maybe are not as proactive as we are. And this is, like Councilmember Trotter said, this is a top priority for all of us here. And I'm, I'm really, really excited that this is moving forward in tandem with Care Court, because as we've said, this is not, you know, these are not random fires, and our city attorney was very gentle in explaining how these things happen, but, and what's causing these things. But we know what it is, right? And driving home last night, across Mass Park Bridge, there was a smoke alert, right? There was, the, the rigs were on the, on Carlton Hills Boulevard, going behind my house again, investigating some, something there. And when I looked over, you know, it wasn't just the, the smoke, and which was obviously a small fire, and it didn't spread, but, and luckily, it was raining, too. But there was, there's just a lot of debris. And as you can tell, I've been sick, so, you know, I, I haven't been driving to work. I'm not sick, right? I just have a cough. I had that lingering cough. But I, I'm driving back to work now, going across the bridge daily now. And, you know, I texted Marlene, I see a tire, I see a tagging, I see, it's, it's constant. We're, you know, as a council, working on this constantly. And this makes me very happy. It makes me very happy. So I just wanted to share that and keep up the great work, because it really does mean a lot. You know, this is public safety highest priority, highest priority right here. So thank you.
Did you have anything?
Yeah, I just want to kind of echo a couple of things, and that is, you guys, you've really led the way, not just, not just locally, but in the state, with what you've put together here. Want to commend you for all the efforts. I know it wasn't, it wasn't done in a vacuum. I know there was a lot of work that was done to make this happen, a lot of research. And I, I see the wording and how the wording can be used properly. But while at the same time, it's, it's appropriate wording. You, you guys just did a bang-up job on this, and thank you very much for, for listening to our requests and, and for setting the standard that I have a feeling other cities will be utilizing moving forward, based on what you have done. So thank you very much.
I guess my only comments are regarding some of the questions I have from the community members about, why don't you do something about the homeless living in the river bottom? They see the fires, they see the, you know, things going on. And up until now, we really have not had the ability to do a whole lot. I've talked about this before, but Martin versus Boise, Idaho, was a case that went to the Court of Appeals, Federal Court of, Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And basically, the Supreme Court refused to hear it, which means it becomes at least law of the land for the R area. And what it said is that we cannot move people along, along that are homeless, that are living on public property. And the reason why is because they have a right to be there. And essentially, that if we do any enforcement action, it violates their right against cruel and unusual punishment. And that might sound silly for a lot of people, because when a fire occurs, aren't they violating somebody else's right to cruel and unusual punishment, losing a home perhaps, or something of that nature? So we challenged our attorneys with finding some way of looking at this in a manner that does not punish somebody for being homeless, but what it does is it gives us the ability to protect our communities. They can go anywhere else, they just can't stay there if they have ignition material in their property, or if they continue to change the flow of the river. And I know I've been down there many times, and I've seen things built up like little dams. And that makes a big difference, because it does affect the environment. And those are the things that we want to address. So if you're homeless, you can go wherever the court says you can go. You just can't go there and be a nuisance where you're damaging things or causing fires and things of that nature. So I too want to say thank you very much. It's been a long time coming. Of course, we had to wait for some of the courts to rule before we could actually take any action. So maybe that's why it didn't seem like we acted really swiftly, but the courts never act very swiftly, so that slowed us down. So I have a motion, and I have a second. Please vote. And lock in your vote.
Motion carries unanimously.
And that takes us to new business, item number 12, which is a possible cancellation of a regular city council summer meeting. And the reason why we do this, I brought this forward, is because we generally choose a meeting so that staff and so council members can actually take a vacation with their family. can actually take a vacation with their family. And so we have some proposed dates. And what did I do with that? Oh, here we go. They are July 12, '26, and August 9. Does anybody have a conflict with anything or what they feel is the best time for them to be away?
I have a preference of the 26th of July.
26th of July?
Motion to approve. Do you need to make a motion? I don't know.
Yeah, yes.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion that identifies July 26, 2023 as a dark meeting for the city council. Please vote. Do we have any speaker slips on this?
No speakers.
Thank you. I have to ask.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right, this takes us to item number 13, which is a resolution of the Community Development Commission Successor Agency approving the recognized obligation payment, also known as a ROPS schedule, for the period from July 1, 2023 to June 30, 2024. And.
Motion to approve.
Oh, have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second. Are there any speaker slips?
No speakers.
Well, then, let's just go ahead and call for the vote then. Good job, Heather.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. That takes us back to non-agenda public comment. Do we have any speaker slips?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. That takes us to city council reports.
I don't have a report, but I have a request of staff to go out to the Mission Gorge Villamobile Home Park and make sure that the noise of the new development is being mitigated properly, the development happening behind that. I know the residents had come before, gosh, it seems like almost a year ago, and expressed their concerns. And as a council, we said we would make sure that the developer expressed those concerns. So I got another email while I was out sick and I haven't responded. But I'm just going to make the ask here that you go out and check it out.
Thank you. I'll go last. Dustin?
No, sir.
Councilmember McNallys?
Yes, sir. So my concerns are raised again with regards to Sandag and making sure that our representation on Sandag stands strong with the other communities that are not going to be pushed around anymore and does everything possible to, I don't care if it's keeping a quorum from happening or whatever the case may be, from allowing Sandag to get that weighted vote at any, by any means necessary. They're pushing hard yet again on burdening the taxpayers with the purchase of a parcel downtown that is known to be riddled with environmental issues, environmental waste. And as, I mean, just personal opinion, I think it's just a favor to the city of San Diego to get it taken off their hands in order to garner some sort of favor back for the city of San Diego to push forward with a vehicle mile travel tax. So, I mean, we, there's a number of cities. In fact, now that there's no representation from a couple, it looks like the city of Santee will be potentially the swing vote to stop a quorum on occasion. And I want to make sure that we're standing strong with that and keeping Sandag from running amok with our tax dollars. And I want to make sure that the council agrees with me or I'm just the only one up here that is tilting at windmills. So I see a one nodding head, two nodding heads.
He nodded.
So.
He's the representative, so.
He, he's, we've, we all got, we all got marching orders on everything. And this is one where this, I don't know. We're getting lots of phone calls and concerns about making sure Santee stands up and does what's right. And I want to make sure that we're all on the same page of what, what that actually means. And if not, then, and you're not comfortable with that, then let's put somebody else there that will be comfortable with that. It's not a personal thing. This is just, I, we got to make, this, this is our tax dollars and they're huge tax dollars. And we've been, we've been taken advantage of for too long. And I want to make sure that they don't, they're not allowed to do that anymore to the extent we possibly can. That doesn't mean that walking out or anything like that is going to solve everything. But it will drive more attention to it, get some more media from it, and maybe bring some light to what's really going on because current media coverage does not want to, they don't want to do anything about it. They don't want to, they don't want anybody to know about it. And everybody I've talked to that pays taxes in San Diego County is appalled at what's actually going on. We don't need more bicycle lanes on the freeways. We need lanes to drive on, on the freeways. That's my two cents.
Great. Well, just so happens, the reason why I want to go last is because I want to talk about your favorite subject, Sandag.
Thank you.
Great segue.
Perfect.
So this is a very interesting time. The Sandag Board of Directors will be meeting on Friday. They will be choosing a new executive board. And the way that works is that proposals are made for folks to be in those positions, chair, first vice chair, and second vice chair. Currently, the chair and the first vice chair are seated only with a weighted vote, which means that 15 cities in the county could say no to, let's say myself. Four cities, four cities can say yes and win. What's that?
19.
Oh. Right, but there's multiple members there. So anyways, and then the second vice chair is a tally vote or plurality vote only, unless they don't get the person that they want. And then they can say no by a weighted vote. And this is where the discussion comes in about walking out and taking away a quorum so that action can't be taken. And there's a lot of discussion about that going around right now and how that can best play out. And this is not a partisan issue. There are Democrats and Republicans alike that are on the same page, say, feel the same way about it. And the biggest problem with what's happening now is there's only one city right now anointing and appointing everything that goes on in the city or the county of San Diego. And that's just not appropriate, whether it's to buy a building that's in question of its safety or it's to take away all of the money for the freeways to make good on the promises that came out in the past. Or if it's to build a $640 billion project, and I say that much because it's probably what it will cost by the time they get around to it. It's only about half that right now. And so we have to, you're right, take a very strong stand. We have to make sure that we work together collaboratively. There's a group of mayors that have signed on to a letter to do away with the weighted vote in the way it is now. Can't get rid of it because it's actually state law, so you have to have it. But we can create a policy perhaps that allows us to not go directly from noes or yeses to, we'll continue the item until the next meeting so that we can collaborate on it and actually negotiate and have a resolution that is equitable to everybody. And so those are going to be some of the things that are discussed at our next meeting. And I would suggest that anybody wants to be there to hear what's going on and see the discussion. I'll just call it that. Nine o'clock on Friday morning, 401 B Street. And it's important for you to go there and tell people what you expect of them as your representatives. Because even though I represent the city of Santee, I do represent the county also. And others forget that they also represent the rest of the county. And the way things are going, we will never have a voice again in East County, period. Whether you live in Lemon Grove, Santee, La Mesa, Alcoa, Poway. Del Mar won't even have a voice any longer. And that's a very sad thing that one city can be the dictator of an entire county. So I hear very clearly what you're saying. And I've been in probably 10 or 12 conversations in the last three weeks regarding all this. So we'll just have to wait and see how it goes. But I'll be there and we'll see what happens.
Can I ask a follow-up on that? Unfortunately, I can't be there Friday. But on the 27th, and KUSI does report on actually other perspectives. So I like to hear some Sandag information from that source as well. On the 27th, I think is Hassan Accrata's, is it a performance evaluation? What's happening on that one?
I haven't seen that one yet.
Okay.
The, the information on that.
Yeah, I think that's telling too.
I think it's just an annual performance evaluation.
I think it was requested. Well, anyway, that should be very interesting. And I just think back to the very first time I met him. But it, you know, the five bold moves, the whole big vision was already out there. And yep, we're doing this. And I, he didn't know me from anybody, but I, we were at Grossmont College, standing on the rainy steps, getting on a bus so he could do his first tour ever of East County. He'd never even driven out here, yet he had a regional transportation plan developed and ready to move forward. And, you know, I mean, this is back when Supervisor Jacobs was on, on the county board of supervisors. And it was just very telling that his first time even putting eyes on the 52 or the 67 or the 94 was that day when the plan was already, in his mind, visionary and rubber stamped. So it leaves a bad taste in my mouth. And he, him in particular, he's proven to be what we thought he would be. So.
The problem.
Fight the power.
The problem you have is, is there is no East County part of that big vision. And, or, or North County. And, and that's where the real concern to me is, is there's no, you know, you've seen it, I've seen it. When they, they were talking about jobs, you know, in 2050, the jobs are still over in La Jolla area, in Surrano Valley. They're not out here. And they, there's no attempt to bring them out here. There's no attempt to run a trolleys out here. They want us to jump on a trolley, go down to Old Town and then go up to Surrano Valley. And it takes two hours to do that.
And frankly, I don't want to.
Yeah.
I live in a suburb and I'm not hopping on the trolley. And no matter what he says, I still remember what he said to me the very first day when I said, well, I don't feel comfortable riding public transportation because it's not safe and it's not clean. And he said, it's not our job. It's our job to build it. Well, too bad.